Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to this snowy night. It's January 22, 2019, and we're at the city council meeting. And we'd like to start out with the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mieski.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Duransek.
Here.
And Reese's absent an excuse.
Thank you very much. Looks a lot more full on the one side of the table than on the other side.
The left side.
If you guys feeling lonely over there? The first order of business tonight is we do have a presentation from the Stoughton Wellness Coalition, and we have two members here. Come on up to the podium and let us know what you have.
Hello. So with me is Teresa Palet. She is our Wellness Coalition Coordinator. Through the Wellness Coalition, and in terms with the city and the hospital, we applied for a Wisconsin Healthy Communities designation. There are five areas in which you have to fill out a long application, but one is, their five focus areas are dementia-friendly, which all of you have seen, and we have a dementia-friendly group in here, in Stoughton. The hospital is one of the first hospitals in Wisconsin to be dementia-friendly, so we've led the way with that. Alcohol and drug prevention, the Wellness Coalition with our Drug-Free Communities grant is well on the way of filling all of those. These things, support of chronic conditions, the Senior Center, we have support groups, the hospital has some support groups. So throughout our community, we're, actually, the hospital and the Senior Center have been doing a diabetic self-management class in the last two years, so that's come very well. Coordination of social economic support, obviously with Start in our community, the Senior Center, Seniors in Need, the, you know, the PEP project, the, all of the other food pantries that we have. So there's a lot of economic support for people in need. And last is access to mental and physical health services. Obviously, we have our free clinic. Start, again, helps with those needs, the hospital social works and social workers, and then, of course, our case managers at the Senior Center. So in collaboration with those, we filled out the application, and we were rewarded the Bronze Award of Healthy Community, so we wanted to bring it to you today. And in three years, we'll apply again, hopefully with some of the projects that we're doing through the Wellness Coalition in connection with the Police Department, EMS, and the hospital. So I think we're well on our way, but wanted to bring this to you.
Is there, like, that's a standing we have as bronze?
Yes.
So that we're not the only bronze?
No.
Okay.
So I have a map of the state awards, and how many are in each radius of which designation. The next step would be submit our formal plan with benchmarks of how we're working on each of these things that we didn't have in place. And they said, okay, submit that the next time, and you're gonna move up in the standing with all of this. So I can't tell you exactly, I wanna say like 13 bronzes.
So are we studying the other communities to see what they have as far as programs that we could probably enhance ours?
All of those applications would be available for us to look at.
Okay.
As in any project, there's best practices that they list, and we can certainly look at those.
Yeah, thank you.
And what do we do with the sign?
The sign will go, we're gonna get another sign, so there'll be one at the entrance to both sides of town. Welcome to Stoughton, and all those emblems, and this will be one of those.
Very neat.
Cool.
Very nice, yes. Thank you very much. You want any additional information, you can contact us, and we can send you a lot of written material on this.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And is there any communications tonight? Alder Person, Hirsch.
Yes, I would like to invite everybody here in this room and listening. Sustain Mostoughton is having their Green Thursday event this Thursday at 6:30 in the fire station training room, and it's gonna be on community-supported agriculture. This is where local farmers grow food specifically for their buyers. So you buy a share into their farm for the year, and you get produce throughout the year. And so there'll be three or four farms there talking about their farms and what the community-supported agriculture, their CSA is all about, and what they offer, as well as the head of the CSA program in this region will be giving a talk about why CSAs are important for us. So, again, it's this Thursday, January 24, at 6:30 in the fire station training room. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other communications? All right, here are none. We'll go on to, ministry reports are in the packet. We'll go on to public comment. We have one person registered, that would be Roger Springman.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to our quick report on the RDA's progress over the last two months. I wanted to take just a few moments out tonight to give you an update on where we are, and also then comment on tonight's resolution, Resolution 13 of 2019. It's item 13 in your packet tonight. So first of all, I think it's, if you may recall, thinking back to last, I think, November, early, or October late, I came here and said that we have this brand-new development plan for the RDA Riverfront site, and would involve inviting developers here through what we call the Request for Expression of Interest Process, RFEI. So I'm pleased to announce that we're almost through with that process. Our consultant, Gary Becker, is completing it as we speak, because he's leaving for vacation next week, so he better be working on it tonight or getting it pretty well wrapped up. We're sure he will. So over the next week or two, we hope to be able to be through with that process and into the world of inviting developers here to say if they like what we're doing, like what we're about, and are able to step forward with their interest in coming here to develop something along the river. So it's an RFEI process, it's not an RFP. It's a way to build a relationship, as you may recall, with the developer, and we think that's a great way to go forward with our unique project. So I'm just pleased to let you know that that's on schedule, and we'll be sending the RFEI out to more than 100 developers in the greater Midwest sometime in February. So I thought you all should know that, because that says we're on schedule and doing what we need to do to keep Stoughton on the map and make the downtown area work better than it is right now. So with that in mind, I want to switch over to the topic of the downtown and resolution on item number 13 for tonight, because I thought as the RDA chair it was appropriate for me to say something about why we're thinking that this is a great thing for Stoughton to do at this point in time. So in sum, the Riverfront project, as you might guess, will be a game-changer for Stoughton and its downtown. It'll bring great notoriety and development to the downtown area, and it was gonna have carryover effects on the downtown itself. And so as we thought about this, our role in making the Riverfront project work, we want to make sure that the downtown and us are working kind of parallel, side by side, over the coming several years. So we thought it might be reasonable for us to take a little time out to help the city and work with the city, and our interest in the downtown, to make sure that we're going parallel, side by side, in both units, the city downtown and the RDA area along the river come out at the same place a couple of years from now, coming out at a better place as we go forward. So hence our interest is making sure that the basic downtown revitalization needs are addressed early and not later, because we want to be ready to make sure both the downtown and the RDA are ready to go. Once the door opens in a couple of years, we want this all to be working together. So just to kind of echo why this is a good idea, so a couple, in fact, about a month ago, Mayor Swaddley, myself, and then Dale Reeves and Gary Becker took a tour of Beloit. While we're in Beloit, a couple of things stood out aside from the downtown area along the river. One is that they have a tremendous amount of downtown committees working to make the downtown better, along with the greater Beloit area. So let me just read a couple of the committees and activities they have going on in Beloit, and you'll see why what we're proposing here makes some sense. So Beloit is a bid district, a business improvement district. They have a CDA, which is parallel to kind of what we're doing here with our RDA. They have a Beloit Economic Development Corporation. They also have a Greater Economic Development Committee, and they also have a Beloit 2020. And I believe they had, and of course, they have a Chamber of Commerce, which works to bring it all together. So the bottom line is that Beloit has a whole bunch of institutions creating private and public sector partnerships to make Beloit work, both downtown and the immediate downtown area, and even out in the periphery of Beloit, Wisconsin. Having said that, I also then took, just for the heck of it, I went up to Sun Prairie, and, because we all can kind of recall what Sun Prairie is like, just to see what Sun Prairie does in its economic development area in the downtown zone. So they have a, Sun Prairie has a business and education partnership that affects just not the downtown, but the greater Sun Prairie area. They also have a bid, a business improvement district. They, of course, have a Chamber of Commerce that's as active like ours is. They have a tourism committee, and they also, of course, have their utilities also doing what they do to make Sun Prairie a better community, both downtown and the surrounding area of Sun Prairie. So the point being, once again, that what makes these cities work and what can make us work better is making sure we've taken care of our downtown needs, which will be expressed later in the resolution, but also to make sure that we have committees and groups working together in a partnership. I think, you know, as I've learned what makes the RDA work, and as I've watched other communities, it's clear to me that what we can do better is to get our business downtown leaders and our businesses themselves, and other partners who care about the downtown and the Riverfront area to work side by side to make our community a better place. So in sum, then, what, that is the large goal, then, of what we're doing tonight with the resolution that Denise and Regina will be bringing forward a bit later, is making sure that we are doing our best by revitalizing those aspects of downtown that the RDA has some responsibility for. So that's the reason why I wanted to be here tonight, just to let you know that we think that's a great idea. Let's do this together, let's do it side by side. The downtown gets a little bit of a lift with revitalization needs and improvements, while we at the RDA keep our areas and activities going down by the river. So that's it. That's my quick summary of where we are and where we need to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Thank you, if I may. I'm sorry, is that okay, Mayor? I'm just briefly, could you articulate the distinction between the bid and the TID? What, obviously, ones of business and, whatever, but yeah, if you wouldn't mind just...
Yeah, and I think it may come up later, but I'll save it now for my perspective. So the BID is a Business Improvement District. It's a specific institutionalized committee composed of downtown business entities who work specifically in the downtown. It's got a specific geographic boundary, and within the bid, then, the business owners and property owners of that area that are, then, by mutual agreement and by the creation of the bid, are allowed to enter into various improvements, projects, whatever, to make the downtown and its surrounding immediate environment better than it is now. So it's a way to institutionalize businesses working and stepping forward to help themselves. And that's not a coincidence that both Sun Prairie and Beloit both have a bid that helps their downtowns do what they do better.
And it's, may I have one follow quickly?
All right.
Really fast.
Okay.
It's not a funding mechanism, right? It's more, I presume, correct?
It's a coordination mechanism, and those that may be more bid experience than I do can kind of go over that perhaps a bit later.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I just ask one question, Roger? That is, I've been especially interested in the revolving loan fund.
Yeah.
That it had, and my concern was that it was underutilized for a number of years. Has that been used, has it been used in the past? And I understand in point five of the where-hasses that you're gonna be addressing that, changing that a bit, or whatever. Could you just tell us what the revolving loan fund is and how it's been changed?
Sure. Just try to make it brief.
Yeah, so in brief, Lucas Trow, one of our members, has taken a lot of time out of his schedule to work with WIBEC to make sure that we have a better plan for using revolving loan monies. And you're correct, it's not been used much. We have one user on record, and that one has done a good job, and it's, he's stepped up and done well with his business. But we've all recognized on the RDA that that's not good enough. We need to open it up to greater use, and that's not a coincidence, as you point out, Alder Boersma, that this is why, as a function of this resolution tonight, we make recognition of the fact that the RDA does care about the downtown, and the revolving loan program that we just updated and made better will be available now for even more businesses in the future.
That's simply a way that you can get money to a business that needs to expand or improve.
Correct.
I would suggest maybe what you do is, maybe you can get Lucas to come and present his updated version of that at a future meeting.
I agree with him.
Because it's much more customer-friendly.
Yep, it is a lot more customer-friendly.
So I think that would be the best way to do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak to the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There's a couple items in there. I'm looking for a motion to...
I'll move.
I'll second.
And I'd like the A, the council minutes, to be removed.
Okay. So there's a motion by Duransek, and a second by Boersma, and we want to remove the council minutes?
Yeah, because there's a mistake.
All right. Okay, so we'll vote on the other two items unless somebody would like one of those removed?
Nope.
Here are none, all in favor of, pardon me?
Council minutes aren't it. Finance?
January 8.
For A?
Yeah, A. So we're gonna vote on B and C, and then we'll come back to A. All in favor of B and C in the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, and we'll go to A, and you had a correction?
Yeah, under Roll Call Communications Presentations, the second paragraph, Planning Director, talks about the construction meeting. It should be January and not February.
So would you like to make a motion as amended, then?
I move that we accept the minutes as amended.
I second.
Anything on that? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you. Can't get anything past you, can we?
You'd be surprised.
[laughing] It takes us to old business, and that's ordinance number one of 2019, and that comes from the Planning Commission. Alder Person, Bartlett.
From the Planning Commission, bring forth ordinance one of 2019, amending ordinance section 2-376 of the City-Stoughton Municipal Administration Ordinance. And I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, and a second. Alder Person, Bartlett.
And this just cleans up our ordinances a little bit. We were just, the way the Planning Commission is, has been conducted and is reflected, the building inspector has not traditionally sat on the Planning Commission. We've had the Director of Planning and Development on there, so we changed that for what, how we've been operating. And the Vice Chair was kind of redundant, it was moved up there and cleaned up a little bit. So it's just cleaned up the ordinance a little.
Okay. Any questions or comments? And what you're gonna see is a number of items coming up as well that are under first readings. What we're trying to do is just clean up some of the language in many of our ordinances, and the Planning Commission is chipping away now in anticipation of having a busy spring on projects, so we're trying to get as much of this done while the time permits. Seeing no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. New business, item number six, comes from myself, Resolution 11 of 2019. I'm asking for somebody to make a motion to confirm the appointment of Jim Killian to Rivers and Trails Task Force.
I'll move.
Second.
President Mieski, and then a second by Duransek. And we're filling a seat that was vacated. David Sharp had served there for many years, and he decided to retire from the Rivers and Trails. We thank him for his service. Jim Killian was recommended by Alder Person Caravello, and Jim works for the DNR. So he'll be a welcome addition. Any questions or comments? Go ahead.
I just want to make a comment that I also welcome Jim Killian. I think his enthusiasm and expertise will be very welcome and helpful on rivers and trails. And he has a lot of experience utilizing the trails and rivers around our area, so that'll be very helpful. And I'd also like to thank Dave Sharp for, he was on Rivers and Trails when I got on there five years ago, and he's done a lot of good work, and I'd like to thank him for his service.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you. And it looks like the rest of them are coming from the Planning Commission, so we'll start with, except for the last one, ordinance two of 2019. Alder Person, Bartlett.
Ordinance two of 2019, amending zoning code section 78-206, pair eight, pair Y of the Stoughton Municipal Code, Keeping of Chickens, and I move to approve.
Second, oh no, I guess we don't need it, that's right.
First reading.
It's a first reading.
Sorry.
So just a little brief history, this was brought up by a community member that made a request that we increase the number of chickens allowed from four to six. Apparently, there's difficulty just buying one chicken at a time, so the idea was to allow people to have more, so when they get down to one or two, they can purchase three or four to get up to that number. Did you have anything else they add to that, or?
Well, that was a good thing. You can't buy, apparently, less than four chickens at a time, so they lose one or two, they have to wait till all four are gone before they can replenish them. Yeah, it just seems healthier for keeping chickens, and that's better for them. And as far as I'm aware, we've heard no complaints last time I asked chief, so.
Okay. Alder Person, Hirsch.
Actually, I don't know if you can buy more, less than two chickens, but it's more when you introduce new chickens in with old chickens. There's the old pecking order, that's where it comes from. The new chickens get basically pecked, so not a good scene. Anyway, what I was gonna comment on this ordinance is, we're upping from four to six, which I'm perfectly okay about, but with the Planning Commission, we don't have any, maybe it's a different ordinance, but regulations of what the size of the coops and the fenced-in areas need to be. I don't want to create a situation where these animals are in too small of an area, and we have more of an animal abuse situation. And so there's nothing in this about regulations, like a lot of other places that have, you have to have two feet per chicken in coop, and at least eight to 10 feet in the runway per chicken. And I was wondering why this isn't in there.
Alder Person, Jensen.
I believe, I believe that this was simply talking about the chickens itself, how many chickens were there. The, what you're talking about, Greg, I'm gonna think, isn't that in your zoning?
It would be in the zoning if it's there, but honestly, I have a...
And I think it's there. I wish Rodney was here to talk to it tonight, but I'm pretty sure that that is there, because there are restrictions that they have to follow. In order to be approved, their coop has to be approved. So there are restrictions there, there's guidelines there.
All right, that's what I was asking, if there's another...
But it's in another ordinance, and I forgive you, but I don't know which one it is.
Holly's right on top of it.
That's not the specifics.
No.
Rodney was ill tonight, that's why he's not here.
It's okay.
We did ask the question, that Planning Commission, and Michael felt that we were okay.
It is covered, I'm sure it is.
And Holly's looking it up right now to see, but this is a first reading, so we can...
No, no, that's what I'm saying, we have time. I just want to make sure that it's addressed next time, because I don't want us to get in a situation that animals are in too confined of a place.
Right now, the coop has to be three.
Why don't you read that out, so just, and...
Well, I guess it doesn't give a...
What we can do, we'll shoot you the ordinance, and then you can look at it, and then if you want us to address that, we'll take it back to planning before we bring it back here, if that's what you want to do, I guess.
I would, I would like to, because I would like to ensure that, you know, it's a responsibility, like any animal, that we make sure that, in our city limits, that they're taken care of.
Okay. All right, we'll check on that. Any other things that you'd like us to look at on this one? Next item would be ordinance three of 2019, and that's also a first reading.
Ordinance three of 2019, amending section 6-2, pair B, Keeping of Animals of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Planning Commission approved 6-0 on January 14, and this is a first reading. And this is just cleaning it up, since we now have a zoning ordinance on chickens, this takes the chickens out of the Keeping of Animals code and just references our others to keep them consistent, so we're not constantly updating two different sections of code.
Again, I have a question, because I know public safety was supposed to be working on the bee thing, and so that would also be this ordinance, and so I was wondering why we didn't try to get the bees, honeybee situation resolved before...
It's because it's not ready yet.
It's been a year.
I know, it's been more than a year.
The city attorney's working on it.
The city attorney's working on it, and...
It's really unfortunate, because people who want bees need to order them now, and it's, they've been waiting on it for over a year.
And I've asked about it at the last two meetings, and it's just not ready yet, so I would, hopefully, next month.
Okay.
Now we have heat again.
Anything on, other than that, on this actual code? Otherwise, that'll be back at the next council meeting. Number nine is ordinance four of 2019.
Let's see.
That's also coming from Planning.
I just lost mine. I don't see nine. I can have it here if you want.
Is that... Yeah. Ordinance four, 2019, amending zoning code section 78-916, pair two, pair O. Zoning Administrator of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Planning Commission approved 6-0 on January 14, and this is a first reading. And this, again, is just cleaning up a section of the code. In the code, there was a paragraph that allowed the zoning administrator to give exemptions to certain, if it met certain criteria, and we're not, those haven't been used, so we're just removing those, cleaning it up. So if they want exemption for any reason, they'll have to come to the Planning Commission or go through the review process.
Cool. Any questions on this one?
Nope.
Okay. Number 10 is ordinance five of 2019.
You guys have been busy.
Ordinance five of 2019, repealing zoning code section 78-518 of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Planning approved 6-0, nothing on January 14, 2019. Again, this is the first reading. And this is repealing a section of the code that dealt with the residential historic design overlay zoning district. It had a lot of inconsistencies with other sections of our code. The Landmarks Committee approved getting rid of it. It was really, has no guidelines or nothing that really held any standards. It references a design guideline from 1998 that was not available when I looked for. There are some sections online, but very few. So talking through, we didn't see that this code was necessary anymore. It's covered in other areas of the zoning codes.
Any question on this one? Okay, we'll go to ordinance number six, 2019.
Ordinance six, 2019, repealing section 10-34, pair B, Electrical Contractors License. Planning approved 6-0 on January 14, and this is the first reading. This is something we used to do, is we used to license electrical contractors. The state took over that responsibility many years ago. This is just cleaning up the code and removing that. We no longer do that.
Okay, any questions on that one?
I do have one here.
Sure, go ahead.
That is, I wasn't aware that electrical contractors in the state needed to be licensed, but...
They do, yep.
They know.
There was a licensing and review process, yes.
Okay. I hope so. I had heard that they were to be certified, but not licensed. I feel like that's changed.
Yeah, I don't know what the difference would be, it doesn't look, the difference in terms.
Any other questions on that one? All right, and that takes us to Resolution 12 of 2019, which comes from Planning.
Resolution 12, 2019, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend the Planning Department fee schedule effective February 1, 2019. Planning Commission approved 6-0 on January 14. And I would move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, and a second. Alder Person, Bartlett.
And this is updating our fee schedule for more realistic fees, what it's been costing them to perform these services. So we're just trying to recover our costs for some of these zoning costs. And they are outlined, redlined in the attached document.
Okay. Questions or comments on this one? You'll probably notice there was, demolition was probably the one that is affected the most, so that was inserted in there. most, so that was inserted in there, and really what we're trying to do is just recover some costs for staff time, because some of these obviously take more time than others, so the fees were adjusted accordingly. Alder Person.
Maybe just a nitpicky thing, is on demolitions, there's an apostrophe between the N and the S, and raisings quite frequently, I don't think the apostrophe is supposed to be there.
Are you looking under number six?
Under, let's see, the attachment.
Well, it's also under number six.
Yep, okay, we can clean that up. All right, anything else? Otherwise, there is a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Resolution thirteen of twenty nineteen comes from the redevelopment authority, and I think this is Alder Person Drancy.
Yeah, on January ninth, the RDA recommended resolution thirteen, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the City of Stoughton Redevelopment Authority to undertake planning activities related to the central business district, and I so move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second. What I'm going to do is I'm going to move the amendment that you have at your place, and so I move the amendment approving the expenditure of up to forty thousand dollars by the City of Stoughton Redevelopment Authority for professional services relating to downtown revitalization.
Second.
Okay, so let me explain what happened. Last week, Matt Dregney was not in town Monday through Thursday, so when he reviewed the packet on Friday, he made a recommendation to have an, the amount, kind of, the maximum amount incorporated into the resolution. So if you compare the two resolutions, everything is the same except for the, therefore be it resolved. And, and so that's the reason why I'm moving to amend it based on Matt's recommendation. Now, he pulled that number from the information that was also given to you, which was the timeline for the downtown revitalization program. I and Gary Becker put together a timeline, I asked Alder Person Hirsch, who also sits on the RDA, to review it, give us feedback, and so what you have is, you know, basically what I would consider kind of a skeleton of a timeline that we can be using over the next, you know, fifteen months. And also, Gary, I asked Gary, I said, so how much do you think this is gonna cost? And he said between thirty and forty thousand dollars to hire a consultant to do the work that we outlined in the resolution. And so that's where the forty thousand dollars comes from, and that would come from the planning line of the TID four. There's money in TID four, there's over, I think, I think there's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for planning in TID four. And so, you know, the most that Gary thought we would spend would be about forty thousand, so that's what, that's, that's why you see this second resolution, and the, and the fact that Matt, you know, didn't come back till Friday, and of course, you know, everything was closed yesterday, so it didn't get sent to you as an amended packet. And, you know, sorry about that, but that's just the way everything kinda conspired. But, as you've seen in the resolution, you know, what the RDA is requesting to do, we have three goals, and, you know, this resolution is based on feedback, not only from the RDA, but feedback from the mayor, he, he fed back staff, you know, feedback, so we really tried to take into consideration the feedback from a number of different folks. And so, the first goal is to solicit input from downtown stakeholders to determine major issues and needs facing the downtown area. The second goal would be to identify strategies and opportunities to advance downtown economic development, and the third goal would be to update and review development plans and opportunities for the eastern end of Main Street. And so, those would be our, our goals. What is going to come out of it, obviously, we won't know, but I think as I expressed the last time, my hope is, is we might have something like a business association that we can kind of jumpstart and, you know, and support, figuring out ways that we can have these public and private partnerships, you know, and to not just listen to people complaining about certain things, but to actually put into place then some kind of plan and strategies. And of course, we would have to prioritize all of that, and we would probably also come back to RDA and the city council to talk about, you know, where should the priorities be? Do we need more money to maybe do a parking study or a traffic study or whatever other kind of study needs to be, or how we would implement it? Obviously, this would be, you know, a give and take here. And this would be a subcommittee of the RDA, and in talking with Gary, the recommendation would be that there would be an RDA member, there would be a city council member, there would be two or three business owners from downtown on this committee, and two or three citizen members. So there would be seven or eight people on the committee. And staff time would be kept to a minimum because, of course, staff is already very busy. We would probably need to use Rodney as kind of a quote-unquote historian, because he knows what studies have been done, what studies haven't been done, you know, and kind of the history of what's kind of gone on with the city. So, I hope I've answered as many questions as possible.
Okay, so right now, what we have on the table is, we have the amendment, which is the, the resolution, so are we gonna be, I'm a little confused, are we just gonna vote on that one thing, it's replacing what was in the packet, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to be clear that we're actually voting on the document that is in the table.
That's on the table.
Okay. Literally.
You might just vote on that first, and then.
Literally on the table, yes.
So, we're not gonna go back to anything else? Because where I, where I'm getting confused is you said you were making an amendment.
Yeah, the amendment would be that, this, this would, this would be the resol, this would be resolution thirteen.
Okay, so you're replacing it.
Yeah, replacing it.
All right, so we're only gonna vote once on it.
No, you need to do two.
I hope so, I don't know.
You're saying we need to do two?
You would need to do two, because this, this is an amendment to the original resolution.
Okay, so that we are gonna vote on that and then go back to the original as amended if it passes.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna be sure we're clear on that. So right now, we're talking about the amendment, okay? And I had Alder Person Jensen was first, and then I had Boersma, was there anybody else? And then Hirsch.
Just have a question for, for either Denise or Regina. On the goals, soliciting input, what's your vision for how you're going to accomplish that?
I, I didn't hear all of the beginning.
Okay, on, on the first goal, on soliciting input, I just wanted to know what was your vision on how you were gonna accomplish that?
Well, I think that that's what we'll use a consultant for, is we'll probably identify stakeholders. I mean, obviously, the stakeholders would be downtown businesses, but there's more than just the downtown businesses. We, we also would probably solicit input from people who live in downtown and also the whole community, so they would be stakeholders. We would probably, I also envision, you know, having like landmarks and the, the arts councils, they also could be considered stakeholders. So, we, we need to identify, you know, kind of all the different groups and figure out how best to, you know, figure out questions that we want them to address so that we get input from them.
And that'll be left to the subcommittee.
This would be left to the subcommittee, yes.
Okay. I had Alder Person Boersma was next.
Yeah, Denise, the, the thing that I am concerned about and have been for a number of years is that the downtown businesses' relationship to the chamber, and that the chamber is a major stakeholder, it would seem to me for, the Chamber of Commerce, for the downtown, and I'm not sure why, well, I, and I, and I know you just mentioned people on this potential committee, which would include like individual people or whatever, but it would seem to me that the chamber, that is really the ma, a matter of the chamber, that they, they are here to support and promote and whatever businesses of the downtown and elsewhere in the city. So I'm just not, I'm not just sure how the chamber should, should or could or would be willing to contribute to this whole process.
Well, that's part of talking to people face-to-face, Sid, and I think that that's, that's what's really important, is really starting to talk to folks and figure out what they can and can't do, you know? I, I don't know what, what the chamber has the ability to do or not do, you know, because of course, I'm sure they have limited funds, they have limited personnel. So, that's part of sitting down and talking with people.
It's maybe to address some of those issues of concern for, you know, about, about, you know, what, what businesses need and how they can get that from various entities, including the city and the RDA, and potentially, I just wanna mention the chamber, because I think that that is part of.
And I'd say that's important, and I'm on the board for the chamber, and the chamber is a membership organization, so not all the downtown business owners are membership. So I think the chamber, you know, would like to, you know, be part of a conversation, but I don't know if they should necessarily lead this initiative because they are a membership-based, and it puts them in a difficult position, so I, you know, I, I think that's one of the distinctions, we're having, you know, a third party, let's say, facilitate this, I think we're gonna be able to extract more feedback from the stakeholders by doing it this way.
And I also think that it, it starts to build, you know, you know, more positive image, because we take this step, we put our hand out, we say, we're willing to be working with you, we want your feedback, you know, we wanna figure out how we can make this better, and, you know, is it gonna be all private, is it gonna be, you know, can't be all public, you know? Again, we keep hearing about public and private, you know, partnerships, well, to me, I see this as starting to build a better public-private relationship with the downtown. And, you know, what's gonna grow out of it? You know, maybe a business association, as Roger pointed out, other communities have many different associations. We're not here, this subcommittee isn't here to impose their will, we're here to kind of figure out here, what's going on, what are the concerns, what can we as a city do, how can we help facilitate? But we can't necessarily take things over, but there are ways maybe that we can help to facilitate, and then, and until you start doing it, you don't know what it is you should be doing, so it's like, okay.
I think it's imperative that we explore it, as to what we could do for our downtown businesses, but I just, I just think that the chamber should be included in this whole process.
Okay, Alder Person Hirsch.
No, I, I think, you know, Denise is right, this is a, the first step in what, on our comprehensive plan says that we need a downtown master plan, well, we gotta start somewhere. And this is really trying to start, jumpstart it with understanding of what is needed from our businesses and our community, and it's a, it's a way to move it forward. So we're trying to tick something off from our comprehensive plan. This'll probably lead to the master plan, but we need to start moving on it. Well, I actually raised my hand, not only to support this, but just because Denise didn't see it, which I'm really surprised at, there's a couple typos. If you look at the resolution from the re, and authority, it'd be nice to have that, the very top box, redevelopment and authority to be spelt right, so. And I just thought it was brilliant that it would be Denise's resolution that there's some typos.
Oh, but Regina, I had to give you something to do, you know, you're, you're so much into that grammar.
Anything else?
No.
You gotta take them all you can. I had President Mijaski and then Riley.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good initiative, however, I have a couple questions. First of all, I think this is an overreach by the RDA, the, the boundaries of the RDA is, is not the full downtown area, it's only a very small portion on the east end. And it's the riverfront, I believe that the RDA has their hands full with the developments that they have ongoing right now. You know, if we're talking about bids as the chair of the RDA was talking about at the beginning of the meeting, then maybe we should develop one to have this couched in that. The RDA has, has projects that it's, has ongoing for a number of years, and I have not seen accomplishment on any of them as of yet. I don't mean to say that as a criticism, I'm just saying that that's the, the nature of the beast, and to add this on to it, which is rather extensive and, and far-reaching, I don't know if this is the correct place for it.
Okay. Alder Person Riley.
Thank you, this, this is going from very substantive to completely mundane and maybe absolutely irrelevant, but I'll say it anyways, because I got called on. In the timeline, there's a number of typos in there, do we give a darn? If we don't give a darn, I'm gonna not even bring them up further.
Yes, I, I give a darn, but I'm, I'm sorry if there's.
We'll talk after. Thank you, that's it, thanks.
Alder Person O'Connor.
When does TID four close?
You can spend money until March of twenty twenty-one. Gary told me that if you have money committed before that, and you don't spend it until a little after, that you probably can kind of get away with, you know, spending it a little time afterwards, but essentially, we have about two years in which to spend the money, that's now in TID four.
And the money that's left there at the end, how is that distributed?
In the end, I think it's distributed to all of the five agencies that collect taxes, and I think it's distributed based on kind of the, the percentage that you would normally collect the property taxes in.
Thank you.
Is that, is that up?
I think this is a really good project, but what I see that we're doing this for is because we don't have a city planner that has knowledge and can assist us. I would love to have this, even if it was a temporary person come in who has the background to assist and not actually pay a consultant. I, I'm always thinking that we need to have somebody that has prior knowledge in planning to come in and guide us, so I just would hope that, that would have been a vision someplace around here, if we're gonna use the money for that rather than paying a consultant.
The mayor and I actually talked about that, and that is something that he's gonna be taking a look at over the next year. to be taking a look at over the next year, you know? Is there a way of looking at the amounts of money that we're, we have spent on consultants over the years, and where can we get the monies from? At this point, all we can do is hire the, hire a consultant to, to help with the process. But hopefully, as the mayor and our finance directors start to dig deeper and look at things, maybe we will be able to hire an urban planner, maybe even if it's only for a part-time, to help with the, a number of projects that we have going. So this, this has been talked about.
Anybody else? So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know, Denise, if you can speak to this, but with regard to President Mijewski's concerns about this becoming a distraction for the RDA, given all of the projects that you're involved in, do you have any concerns about that, or do you have any response to that at all?
Yeah. I, I think that creating committees, creating subcommittees that answers to another body does not create distraction. I mean, we have committees here. The library board created a number of committees, because you can't do all the work at this level, the library board couldn't do all the work at, at their level. They create ad hoc committees. This would essentially be a subcommittee that is like an ad hoc committee. It would be in existence for a limited period of time. The subcommittee would do the bulk of the work, the subcommittee would then go to the RDA and report, get guidance. We would also come to you and report to you and also get feedback from you, just like the RDA is coming and reporting on its projects. This is a way of delegating, essentially. And, you know, I think that, again, it's pretty clear that the RDA was created to eliminate blight and to improve the vitality of underutilized areas. It's right there in the first whereas, you know? It seems pretty clear to the RDA that, yes, this really falls under our authority, this would be something we can do. And the RDA has talked about it several meetings, and they feel comfortable with it. And, you know, I'm willing to be, you know, a very intimate part of this, and for any of you who know me, you know, I get the work done. And I'm not going to, you know, try and dump on the RDA or on Rodney or on other people. But I also believe in the communication aspect, because we saw what happened when the RDA didn't communicate with the City Council. So there's going to be a lot of communication between the RDA and also City Council. And so, you know, to me, it's, it's delegating, and we create a good committee, we hire a good consultant. Gary Becker has, is going to help us through those first few meetings, getting together the names of urban planners that he thinks would fit with this, help us with interview questions. And once we, you know, find somebody that fits with, with us, then Gary, you know, withdraws, and we have, you know, the consultant who takes us through the process.
Okay. Alder Person Boersma.
I'm intrigued with what Alder Johnson, Johnson just mentioned, and whether it would be appropriate to have like a forty thousand dollar thing put into a temporary city planner position or something, because I think that, I, I think that we can do studies, but then studies, studies are great, and I, and I, and I support this, Denise, for sure, but it seems to me that we, we have, I agree with Alder Johnson, that we've discussed having some kind of more formalized city planner. And if, I don't know whether or not that could, that money could be used for more of a city planner-type person to really guide us through some of this issue or not, I, I don't know. But, but I am intrigued with what you talked about, because we've talked about it for years, and we've talked about it, and we've not, we've not really done anything about it at this point. Just my comment.
All right. So we have a, an amendment on the table right now. Any more questions on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries, so that goes back to the original resolution as amended. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries as well.
Would you adjourn?
Motion and a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. Safe travels.